Good evening. I'll bring this regular city council meeting to order. If we could please rise for the invocation by Pastor Grant Foster from Riverside Church.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you first and foremost for the beautiful place that you have given us to live. We truly can say we live in paradise. Father, we ask your guidance, direction for this wonderful council. Each one of these staff members, we pray that you give them wisdom, knowledge, direction as they govern the affairs of our city. We ask your blessing on this meeting now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartlin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Here.
Mr. Dodd.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Ms. Kitchen.
Here.
Thank you.
Any agenda modifications, council? Lead us down to Proclamations. All right, Paige Woodward from 211. Yes. I haven't seen you in a while, Paige. This is a proclamation declaring 211 Awareness Week. For anybody that doesn't know, 211 does a tremendous service for our community, has a lot of resources out there that people need. They can be in need for all kinds of things: substance abuse, mental health issues, or just general issues at all. So February 13th through the 18th is Declaring 211 Awareness Week, whereas many times individuals need help with meeting life's basic needs and they are not sure where to turn. And whereas 211 is easy to remember and use and is recognized as the key link in providing individuals and families with the information and support they need to solve their problems or when they just need someone to talk to. And whereas 211 is a free confidential phone call, available 24/7 with extensively trained staff and volunteers who are here to listen and here to help, who assist callers in need of information, assessment, and referrals to social services agencies. And whereas the City of Sebastian is fortunate to have the 211 helpline, the service that is available any time of day or night that enables individuals and families to get the help they need. Now therefore, I, Bob McPartlin, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim February 13th through the 18th as 211 Awareness Week in the City of Sebastian and urge all citizens to be aware of the only telephone number they need to know to access information and referral to the programs and services in our community that provide assistance in such areas as healthcare, insurance, volunteering, food, daycare, mental health counseling, support groups, and financial assistance.
Whoops.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, council. It's nice to be here again this year for 211 Awareness Week. We do this in conjunction with February 11th usually, so this was the closest dates of your meeting to do this, so that 2/11 coincides with 2/11. As the sheriff likes to say, if it's not a 911 call, it's a 211 call. We are the front door to all the Health and Human Services. It's an easy-to-remember three-digit calling code, and it's available 24/7. So we've, we, just this year, rolled out texting 24/7 so that generally it's the younger folks that are texting for information, gathering information differently than maybe you and I did at that age. But that's available by texting your zip code to 898-211. So we're really pleased to be able to roll that out, too. Again, because people are getting information in different ways than we have traditionally. So again, council, thank you very much. And Bob, it's good to see you.
All right, thank you, Paige. What's the run, the Sunshine?
Oh, okay, yeah.
I think that's a fantastic one. That's for a lot of seniors in our community that are alone by themselves in their home. They can refer themselves and get a daily phone call from somebody from 211 just to check on their health and well-being. And it was Paige, a couple of years ago, told me about the program. And it was an elderly lady who fell down in her tub, and she laid there all night. And the thing that she knew was 211 was going to call the next day. And when they didn't get her, that they were going to send help on the way. So I think that's a fantastic program.
It's, we, I tell you, their lives are saved every year. Probably about, you know, anywhere from, in the neighborhood of six lives are saved a year because of that phone call. And again, people can just call 211 and say, "I'd like to sign up for the Sunshine Call." Or family can call on behalf of loved ones that live here. Maybe they're good about calling them every other day. But it would be that very other day that mom or dad has an accident and needs help. So we're very proud to be able to offer that to Sebastian. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Paige. Now we have a presentation from Mr. Vincent Burke on the Collier Creek Water Project. Mr. Burke, one of our favorite sons.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Vincent Burke, Director of Utility Services. We're here to update the board on the Collier Creek Estates Water Main Assessment Project. Thank you to Mr. Griffin for allowing us the opportunity to come up here to address the board. So I want to just kind of go over a little summary of what we have proposed. If you take a look at the picture that's on the screen, I'm not sure if that can be put up onto the screens. You'll see the entrance to Collier Creek Estates. You'll see the sidewalk on one side, there's a little wall area and some of the vegetation. So keep that in mind when we show you some of the aerial views a little bit later on because it'll be important for what we have planned in that vicinity. So just a brief history on how we got here. This project has been on again, off again, for a number of years. County was requested to evaluate the feasibility of an assessment water type project back in August of 2014. A petition package was sent out to the point of contact later in August, and we received the valid petition from those owners who were interested in having a water main with some signatures that had to be verified. Fast forward to April of 2016. We brought the information to the Board of County Commissioners, and the board approved two things. One is to allow us to hire Carter and Associates to do the topographic survey and to find out where the existing water services are located on the property, and also to advise staff to move forward with preliminary design once the information was received from the survey crew. During that time that we were in design, it became known through the point of contact that there were additional homeowners that were interested in the property. Homeowners started talking. They found out that there was an assessment that was in process, and there were other homes that would like to be part of that. So you'll see on another map that we have Phase 1, which was the original area, and then 1A and 1B, which were added to the original area. So the Board of County Commissioners can look at the benefiting properties and modify or adjust the area that's dependent on the assessment role that will be put forward. And that's what staff had brought back to the Board of County Commissioners is amending the original area that was initially part of that design to include Phases 1A and 1B, which we'll show you shortly. Most recently, the Board of County Commissioners approved Resolutions 1 and 2. And we're here today just to get the word out for those city residents that live inside the city that are going to be part of this assessment package. And that public hearing is set for March 14th, 2017. So here's an overview map. The long sliver is Easy Street, which was part of the original Phase 1 area. And as I mentioned, this little L-shaped area and the small cul-de-sac, Phase 1B, Phase 1A, were added to the original area, bringing the total number of parcels for all three of those phases, 1A and 1B, to 141. And our resolution, or our ordinance, rather, describes that we need to have more than 66.23% of those folks in favor before we bring it to the board to get authorization to move forward. In this case, including the additional phases, we have over 70%, almost 71% of those folks who are in favor of this water main project. As you can see, we have estimated construction costs of about $835,000. There's some surveying and administrative costs that are added on top of that. Just under $900,000. Divide that by the number of benefiting properties. In this case, we're doing an equal assessment based on board direction, and that's roughly about a $6,250 per parcel assessment. So that first picture that I had looked at assumes that we were in the intersection of South Wimber looking south. This is Easy Street. There's an existing 8-inch main that we're going to tie into. We're going to add an isolation valve, and then I'm going to do a directional bore under the canal. We need to work with your engineering staff. So Mr. Wanabi, if we can take five minutes of your time after this to discuss the right-of-way permits. Our June and I are available to maybe discuss the logistics, get you a copy of the plans so that you can have a review of that prior to going out for bid. So we're going to tie into the existing line at South Wimber Drive on the north side. I'm going to run about 9,600 feet of 6-inch PVC pipe throughout the development. And then off Angler Drive, there's an existing connection that we're going to tie into and then come in and branch out to the two cul-de-sacs and have a looped service. So if we ever have a break within that subdivision, we can isolate that with not putting everybody out of water. So 21 vacant lots, 120 single-family homes, 70.92% in favor of the project. Estimated costs are $6,250 for the assessment. Again, we are going to go to the Board of County Commissioners for a public hearing. We must advertise in the local papers prior to those meetings. We have sent out letters to all of the property owners letting them know when the public hearing is going to be held. We also want to make sure that some folks who may or may not be watching this know that there is an informal meeting for all residences to be taking place March 7th at the Sebastian Yacht Club, which is at 820 Indian River Drive here in Sebastian. And that will be at 6 o'clock PM. So an informal meeting for all residents, if they have time, is on Tuesday, March 7th, at 6 o'clock PM at the Sebastian Yacht Club. So again, we'll put out papers. We sent letters to those folks. There's copies of these plans at the utility department, should anybody want to take a look at it. And we're going to be working with engineering here in Sebastian to get right-of-way permits. We have the DEP permit. And if the board approves to move forward to the public hearing is to hear voices from those folks either for or against the project that if the board decides to move forward after the March 14th meeting, then staff will then move forward with putting the design out for bid and getting bid prices from qualified contractors. So again, January 4th, we had the Resolution 1 and 2, informational meeting that we had just talked about, March 7th. And then the public hearing held at the Indian River County Commission Chambers, which is 1801 27th Street, Vera Beach, Florida, next to the Vera Beach Airport. And that'll be held on March 14th, 2017. We do have the FDE permit. We're going to work with the City of Sebastian to get the right-of-way. And if it's approved, we'll be looking to advertise in the summer of 2017. Based upon our estimated completion time, we think it's going to be May or end of May of 2018. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to come to talk to you tonight. I'm available for any questions, but we just wanted to make sure that your residents know about the informal meeting on the 7th and the public meeting to be held on March 14th, 2017.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burke. Mr. Griffin, can we get that informational meeting up on Channel 25?
Yes, sir.
If it's not already done so.
Did I hear that you were going to have that meeting at the yacht club, Sebastian Yacht Club?
At the yacht club, yes, sir, March 7th.
Is that venue going to be big enough?
Yeah, if you have much of a turnout, that won't be as, it's going to bring up, you don't, you won't be big enough.
We'll talk to the point of contact, and if we have a feel for more folks, we might be.
What day of the, what day of the week is that, March 7th?
It's a Tuesday. It's a week before the public hearing.
Tuesday, maybe we could have the meeting here, Jeanette? If council chambers are available on a Tuesday?
If I, I think we were actually combining this meeting with the HOA's, I don't know if that's their monthly or quarterly meeting for Collier Creek. So I think the point person thought that would be best to combine it with their HOA meeting. Typically, the HOA meeting starts at about 7:00. So he basically told us to come at about 6:00 because he might be able to get most of the residents, you know, at that meeting because of the HOA meeting.
That building won't hold, but there's a limit of like 60.
It won't. It's not big enough, Monty.
For the yacht club.
If council agrees, because normally we're not permitted for HOA meetings to be in here, but since it's this issue, I'm suggesting you have it here in council chambers. But how about if I talk to you all tomorrow?
Okay. We'll talk to the point of contact. I'll give you a call. Thank you.
Especially since, since the other meeting is the county commission meeting, the public hearing is during the day on Tuesday. Our public in this area is used to nighttime meetings where people who are working, and this is a working community, would be able to come. A lot of the residents are not going to be able to make it during the day.
But I think that the thing we have to make sure we're paying attention to here is that those residents who are directly affected are the ones that the county's actually going to because they're going to attend their meeting. So the HOA is, has their monthly meetings there, and the county's going ahead and reaching out and going to their meeting. And I think that they're the ones who are going to be most directly affected. In fact, they're the only ones that are going to be affected at all. So I think that they're the ones who are going to be at the meeting. So I think that it logistically could work out quite well. Maybe it holds 60 some people in there.
There's a, there's a limit posted on the door.
Maybe there'll be a huge uprising. But this is, this is an advertised, this has been advertised, and there's maybe a couple of people who live in there in this room right now. So this has been on, this has been advertised in the press journal that this is up for discussion tonight. So although, I know this is a very contentious issue in Collier Creek Estates. I know that very well. And I have a couple of questions about the why it's not, why it's not being, hasn't been done before. My questions are that, was it, when did we put water in the city? Was it 2001, 2002, the original water extension through the municipality?
Going back to '95.
Okay, so back to '95. The residents of the city didn't have a 60 or 70% threshold on voting for that. That was just approved by council, right? And this property as a parcel within the city limits, I'm just trying to figure out why that wasn't considered. I know it wasn't developed at the time, but why was it not, why was it not just essentially required to put, to put the water in?
Yeah, it's a great question. There were certain parts of the city that were required in Phase 1, 2, and 3 to be built out within a certain amount of time. And for reasons I have to research, Collier Creek was not included in that area.
Yeah, I've looked at that because I live, and I'd love to have city water. And I can't get it because I can't get 60% of the people that live near me to agree to it. If I understand it, there's a quirk in the county regulations that allows subdivisions with half-acre lot sizes to opt out. And that was the way that they opted out, is what I was told. If that's not the case, then maybe the commission should be involved in that.
And I wonder, I don't mean, and I'll let you answer that, but I wonder if that, if the council should be petitioning the county to just go ahead and get all of these parcels taken care of. For me, it's a, it's a safety issue. You know, there was a boat fire in Collier Creek Estates a few years ago, and there are no hydrants because there's no water. So it's a big issue, and it's a safety issue, and it's a quality of life issue. So for me, I was just wondering why every other resident in the city had no choice. And it's good they didn't because it was only, I think, a little under $3,000 on the assessment back then when you did it. And now it's almost $7,000. So my question again is, why is a development allowed, why is someone allowed to develop in the middle of a city that has water surrounding it not required to hook up to that water? That, that's my question, I suppose.
Yeah, I can only speak about, just on the assessments that I've been here for the four years with the county. And we have brought, per our code, preliminary, preliminary signatures to the board. And we've had 53%, we've had 59%. One such instance is on Indian River Drive where.
But again, I'll just, I understand that that's a very contentious issue for the citizens, for the residents currently living in that area. But I don't recall ever voting on whether or not the county should be bringing water into the City of Sebastian.
Yeah, there's certain, and we did some research, that there's certain provisions in the bylaws of the covenants attached to Collier Creek that allow for the county to bring in an assessment process. So per the assessment process, we follow county code, which typically requires the 66.23%. So for some instances, I'm not sure about the lot size, we haven't been able to achieve that 66.23% to move forward. Unless, you know, the board directs us to move forward without taking into account some of those folks in the votes. But because of the reason that is contentious, we've had this fail because it did not reach the necessary threshold of that 66.23%. And so that's where we've had to do the process.
So we have two parcels within the city limits of Sebastian that don't have county water. Is that correct? And that, this would be one of them. And then, not to tell about where Mr. Dodd lives, is another one. So those two are the only ones within the city limits that don't have water?
I'm not sure where you live in Ursel, yeah.
Are there more? Do we have other areas that don't have water? And I'm just, just don't understand.
Well, yes, I mean, I'm thinking of Ursel Dunes, but that's in the unincorporated part, just west of Roseland Road, just north of the city limits as well, is there on Wellwater up there. They don't have county water, so. There are some areas, and Vera Lake Estates is another one, where, you know, there's pockets.
That's not in the city limits.
No, it's not in the city limits.
So when we, when we annexed, when we annexed the property, let's just say, Sebastian River Landing, we required they had county hookup. And everything we're doing now with development requires water sewer, those types of things. So when this property developed, there was water surrounding it. And I'm thinking this is not a county issue. I'm just, it just, it's just funny to me that, that we had tens of thousands of residents in the City of Sebastian that were required to pay almost $3,000 a year to hook up to water back in 1995 through 2000 or whatever it may have been. And there, and I'm just curious how a donut hole happens there. That's the only thing that I don't understand.
Right. I mean, our Chapter 910, our land development regulations, if you have a new construction site, if you have X number of folks, yes, you're required to connect, depending on if you're a quarter mile away or further. And that, that's non-negotiable, and that's part of the land development code. But I don't know if those regulations were in effect at the time that this particular subdivision was initially plotted and built out. And I think that it may not have been, which is why, A, we had that donut, and B, through the reasons that we talked about, not getting enough of the folks to vote yes for water until we got to this point today.
Last question, and I'll be done here. Because obviously, I appreciate you coming up here. I'm glad to see that the citizens or the residents of that area have finally decided that water is important to them. If the city council were to petition the county to put water in these areas, would that then drive the county to go ahead and start the process? Or would they still have to go through the sort of referendums type of?
Yeah, we would still have to go through the process to set the resolutions 1 and 2, notice it ahead of time in the public paper, and give people an opportunity to come to the Board of County Commissioners to voice their opinion either for or against the project. So there is a process to do that. The Board of County Commissioners has that ability. But historically, by not having that supermajority, in other counties, it's much lower. It's just 51%. We can vote a president 51%, but assessments are at that supermajority just because some of them do get contentious. But that's another option. If, if for some reason there might be an area that may not have the votes or certainly water is an issue for fire, for other public health and safety, then you would be able to petition the board. And the board can make a decision to move forward without the supermajority.
So just, this is a hypothetical. If, if we as a body, three of us, voted to go ahead and petition the county to install water lines through every property in the City of Sebastian, then the county would look into that, and there's a potential that that could go forward.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Was there a resolution originally passed when the whole thing was done in '95 that required connections in the city? Does anyone know?
No, it wasn't mandatory.
No? So, so basically, basically it was done because the property was here and when it was transferred over, it was done?
Jeanette and I will do a search tomorrow, see if.
Actually, what, what occurred was the assessment was only applied when the connection was made. So they ran the lines, and then once you connected, and I think they gave a certain period of time in order to do that connection, there was no assessment unless you connected your home to the water system.
Actually, that's not the way it worked for me. I got assessed for my two lots, and then I hooked up a couple of years later.
That's correct. And the documents I gave you, Councilmember Todd, is there were certain areas that had to be built out, and there was a basically assessment. Because of the scale of the project, the overall assessment to each benefiting property member was much lower because you could basically, you know, have economies of scale. But because the county, from the research that I've been able to do, had to borrow funds, they had to pledge the revenues that were tied to the covenants that were assured from those folks that would be assessed. And the only way that they could do that is to make sure that they had those pledged revenues to basically pay down the debt and service that debt.
Okay. I have to be very careful because I live in this area, and it's always amazed me. For the past 10 years, I've tried many times to try to find out exactly how they slipped through the cracks inside the city. And this one, I mean, it's kind of like a piece of the county surrounded by Sebastian as far as when it comes to utilities are concerned. And, but since I live there, I have to be very careful. But I certainly would be in favor of some type of a, of an attempt to try to get this done.
I'm just curious, you mentioned something about bylaws? That it's in, there's mention in the bylaws that?
Yeah, the reason why I mentioned that, there were some concerned citizens that thought that the county was overstepping its ability to do an assessment within the city limits. Our attorney researched the matter and found that not to be the case and actually researched the bylaws that were attached to the subdivision, which specifically talks about the county's process and making sure that if an assessment process such as this were to go through, we'd be following the ordinance through the county.
Okay, so that was the bylaws that were?
Just in, just in the subdivision, just tied to that subdivision when it was built out.
The homeowners' bylaws? They write them themselves? That, I don't see, you, you can change bylaws by consensus. So I'm not sure what, that's something that this, for the state of Florida and for homeowners to be accredited, you have to have bylaws, but that's something that they write, not something that the city or the county is involved in writing.
That's correct. And it was just to answer a concerned citizen regarding the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Burke? Thank you, Mr. Burke. All right, that leads us up to brief announcements. February 10th, Friday night, there'll be a chamber concert in Riverview Park. The Z Street Speakeasy Band, starting at 5:30 to 8:00 PM, this Friday. Then on Saturday morning, the Storybook Forest in Riverview Park will occur from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Also, on February 11th, the Four Chaplains Commemoration at the Veterans Memorial will be at 2:00 PM. And on February 18th, the Sebastian River Art Club Show in Riverside Park from 10 to 4:00 PM. Any other brief announcements? I'll recess this city council meeting and convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Call this to order. Looking for an approval of September 28th CRA minutes?
Sumoed.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any pose? Brings us up to Item 7C, Approved Deceptic to Sewer Grant Program Application. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. Members of the agency, a few meetings ago, we brought, staff brought forward to you a grant from the Indian River Lagoon Council, $100,000. As part of that grant, when council accepted that, staff also suggested that the way this could be utilized would be combined with the Deceptic to Sewer Grant Program that the city already has in place. The instructions to staff were to redo the application, bring that forward, and get the program implemented. Tonight, we are bringing the draft of the application forward. We think it's complete, and we are recommending approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Deceptic to Sewer Grant Program Application.
With second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Chairman McPartlin?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
So, being that the only business, I'll adjourn the city, the Community Redevelopment Agency, and reconvene. Regular city council meeting brings us up to item number nine, our consent agenda.
I'd like to pull item E.
E?
Yes.
Okay.
Move approval of item A through D, and F and G.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right. Item ninety, approving the purchase of one two thousand seventeen Nissan Frontier. Ms. Kitchen, any questions?
Yeah, I do have some questions. I don't have a problem with the fact that this truck needs to be purchased. My problem is that this is the third non-budgeted large item that's come before us in four months. We need to find a way for the department heads to sit down with you when it comes time to do the next budget, so this doesn't happen again.
Well, I think that'd be great, but they can't forecast when a truck's going to break down. It's very hard to do. So, I'll ask them to put that in their hard drive and see if they can't work those forecasts out, but this is an extraordinary item, that's why I'm asking for this appropriation. And I stand by the agenda transmittal.
I'll, I'll actually, I'll, I'll throw in there too, just real, I, I understand that you're concerned, I, when you see items come up that aren't budgeted items, but we went about nine years of holding on as long as we could to stuff, and so the, the, the getting things fixed up and, and going through the process of, of replacing equipment was basically shut down for many, many years, so. So although I, I, I do understand, but where you start seeing, this early in a budget year, we start seeing these appropriations being made, I will, I will give deference to the fact that we have asked city staff to hold off for many years, and then we only, we've only started to, to replace the equipment that, that's needed replacing over the last decade.
Ms. Griffin, what's the balance on the R and R fund?
What fund, sir?
The balance on the R and R fund. After, after this vehicle.
Ten says four twenty-seven. It's around four hundred.
If you don't mind, I'd move approval of item E of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, that brings us up to committee reports and appointments. It's myself and Ms. Coy, we were at an MPO meeting this morning, and we were discussing the North County Hub for the goal line, and some of the things that came up, we were looking at moving where the actual hub is now on Dryden and right off of five twelve, looking, moving.
Across from the cemetery.
Moving it over to the conservation area, which is basically there on five twelve and Water Vallet. You know, there's a lot better things, there were concerns from the citizens brought up about some crime and vandalism, and a lot of the kids congregating there, there's a lot of discussion. You know, some of my feelings are, it doesn't matter if the hub was there or the hub wasn't there, the kids are going to congregate in the area where there's the Burger King after school, and the graveyard, as well as the walking trail. And I think the MPO board, what there was, we were unanimous about moving it, well, the consultant's going to do an assessment over at the conservation area, but whatever happens there, we're looking to make sure that it's a well-lit area, cameras involved, as well as a strong police presence, because that area falls within the three jurisdictions of the Indian River County Sheriff's Office, the Sebastian Police Department, and the Felsmere Police Department. So trying to work out those issues, and, you know, some of you members may be getting some calls, or emails, or anything, and we can share the PowerPoint that was shared at the MPO this morning, just so you have more information. But that is the best scenario for the hub to be, because the way the four lines hook up together, it can't be moved to the county pool, because that takes away from other things, it takes away from service in Sebastian, so that is the, the most efficient means. Anything to add on that, Ms. Coy?
It was, it was a really, really good discussion meeting, the people on both sides of, of moving it, people who ride the bus, there was a, a lady there who rides the bus, and then a couple concerned citizens were there also. It was a really great discussion, all discussion up until this, until this point, have looked at five or six spots to move it to, and everybody keeps coming back to this spot, as being the most advantageous, the, the least cost, and where we can do the biggest value. There's a lot of room to do the, the lighting and making it a safe place, not just from a, getting the buses off and on the road safely, but having it open where some of the vandalism, the, and the criminal activity would be well-lit and easily surveilled. So, it's looking good, and in April, I forgot the date, but in April, will, it will come before the MPO, and it looks like they're going to ask us for a decision at that time. Is that right?
Yes, a, a, as well as it's also going to be a gateway for the walking trail that goes there, because eventually, with the construction on nine ninety-five, there's going to be a walking overpass over ninety-five that leads into Felsmere. So this is a point where, you know, it could be congregated for bicyclists, as well as walkers and joggers. And also, after the meeting, I discussed with Mr. Masser from the MPO, you know, about in the future, that walking trail might be conducive to some criminal activity, and maybe utilizing the fire station, which, the new fire station up at the pool area, maybe they could, the sheriff's office could house an ATV that would run up and down the trail just to check out things. So they're, they're very open to all of that.
Could I?
Yes.
What would be the possibility of trying to get the MPO to take a look at, at increasing the, the traffic flow, or restructuring the south interchange that's not in the five-ten, five-twelve exchange? As they move that station, they're going to increase the traffic on that exchange, that exchange is a real problem right now. Wonder what opportunity would be to try to get the MPO to address, as part of making this move, address that re-engineering or redesigning that exchange on the south side of the, of that street?
Which, which one?
Okay, the, the five, the five-ten, five-twelve exchange on the south, on the nor, not the south side, the north side of that, is actually in the city's area responsibility, city of Sebastian, not in the counties. And they're going to keep that, that terminal on the north side of, of five-twelve, and basically, they're going to enhance it, they're going to have a larger parking lot, they're going to have more services there, which will add more traffic on that north part of that exchange, and the city of Sebastian's going to have to fund revamping that. What we might want to think about doing is trying to get the MPO to take a look at that.
I don't know if that, that came up, I, I think they're, they're looking at that conservation area with a whole lot of grants, with the, with the Department of Transportation, everything along those lines. I don't think it's going to fall on the city of Sebastian.
Well, if, if they don't do anything to the north side of that exchange, and they add many trips to it, then we're going to have a problem, and we're going to have to fund. I think, that actually, that came out during a P and Z hearing that I was involved in about a year ago, looking at a site plan there. And, and one of the problems is that that, that's north side of that exchange is over, overextended right now. So as they enhance the bus tra, the bus station there, and they, they expand that pro, the parking lot, more people can have access to the walking trail, there's more traffic that flows through there, they're going to add more trips to the north side of that exchange. And it's actually the city of Sebastian's responsibility to maintain that, not the counties.
The buses already travel there, so it's not adding, the buses already go through that exchange, all of them. We're not adding or taking away anything. We're just changing where the buses pull off. So, that, that's, that's not adding anything to the traffic.
Well, one of the, one of the problems in that exchange, if I remember our conversation at the P and Z, was the bus, the bus exchange itself was, was creating part of the problem, and since it was being looked at to be moved, it wasn't, so, I, I don't, it's just a thought, it was just a thought, that.
Well, sure, Mr. Watanabe will take, take those concerns forward and talk to.
He's, he's smiling over there.
Yeah.
Maybe just to help educate everybody, that side of the street, which is Wayverlett, the reason why we had issues with the development was that street only has one lane each direction, where mostly the other legs have two to four, this has only one lane. So when you have through movements and left turns, right turns, all sharing one lane, that's where the buses stack up. Then you get the Snoke driveway right next to that intersection, that kind of causes an issue for cars trying to get out and buses trying to get out. But in our discussion today, we kind of highlighted, the farther away you put that transit center axis, maybe right off of Dryden, that gives a larger staging area, so that's what they're going to be looking at, not so close to the intersection, but moving it far enough away, so that way they could circulate within that conservancy area, like a loop pattern.
Okay.
I understand, but he's, I understand the concern, because I think there's only like three lanes, three or four lanes at the corner, and if they're going to be developing that corner on the northeast side, then, then any, if anyone were to develop that, then they would have to look at the flow, and they would have to look at traffic patterns, and government shouldn't be any different than if it were a developer who was going to put in a, a store. So, I, I, I understand what he's saying, and I think that that, that concern should be brought up, that, that maybe a, a revamping of the intersection is something that should be looked at, and there should be counts that are done. And even if it's just a, even if it's just a widening down to, I'm not sure what the name of the road is that goes across to the, the, the cemetery, across the cemetery, the other road, I mean, even if it was just another additional lane or something like that, I think that, you know, the engineering needs to be done on it. If they're going to put something on the north, what it's looking like the nor, what is that, the, geez, the north?
You need to, you need to go down to the light.
Corner of that intersection, then, then if a private person did that, they would have to do counts, and they'd have to make sure the counts work, so I understand the concern, and I think that should be something we should definitely.
I, I think we can focus on it with, with Mr. Watanabe's help, we can, might be able to incorporate those changes, and I think that's what Mr. Dodd was trying to say, incorporate those changes into the county plan. Let, 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 let's, let's see if we can't get goal line to pay for that.
So you can relay those concerns, Mr. Watanabe? All right, thank you. And I know also some concerns came up about the trash at the, the bus shelter that was there, and, and I know I referred him right away to Mr. Griffin, and he got with Ms. Deagle from the Senior Resource Association, which runs the goal line, and those were handled, I believe the trash pickup is three times a week or something, Mr. Griffin?
Sir.
All right. All right. Any other committee reports? All right, that leads us up to the Citizens Budget Review Advisory Board, consider the appointment of alternates. Ms. Williams?
Um, that was, that was brought up by members of council, or member, member of council, and the co-provides that each board can have two additional members, so I leave it up to you guys, if you would like to add some alternate members, they would have three-year terms.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would go ahead and make a motion to, that, that we add, add our next meeting two additional members as alternates to the Budget Advisory Committee.
Second.
Sounds good.
Um, thank you. I don't have any applicants, but I'll get you some.
You had, you had one left over from.
As soon as possible.
Okay.
You had one left over from the, yeah, advertise it, and let's, we had one left over from last week.
All right. You need a vote on this, or you want to, you can just run with the consensus?
Um, well, your motion is good, it shows your blessing to move forward with it. Oh, the roll call vote?
Yeah, okay. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? All right, roll call, Ms. Williams.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Hopefully, we will not have any more budget hearings that don't have a quorum.
All right. Leads up, public hearings, we have none, unfinished business, we have none. This, okay, now it's time for public input. Anyone from the public wish to speak about anything not already on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Andrea Ring, four oh seven, Coraleen, Sebastian. And I'd like to talk to you tonight about the Eagles Nest Restaurant, and the fact that the city has been subsidizing this restaurant for about twenty-six years now. And I just found this out at the last council meeting, and whenever we talk about the golf course, we always say it's not making any money. And the fact is, the golf course does make money. The golf course is in the black. But the Eagles Nest Restaurant is automatically combined with it, and it is eating up all of the golf courses' profits. And we, as citizens, are subsidizing the Eagles Nest Restaurant. We have been for like twenty-six years. They now want to extend this contract with the city for another ten years. And I think it's time we let our city manager do his job. We need to let him do what we paid him to do. He needs to do his due diligence. He needs to put out an RFP and have somebody else to respond, so he can, with data, come back to you all, and say, there are other people who will be in the black and not always be in the red. We have been eating up the Eagles Nest Restaurant electric bill for the last twenty-six years. And so, I just wanted, you, you know, to let the city manager do his job. He has to bring him back to you all. I mean, eventually, you have to decide who will be the person who runs that restaurant. But we should try to get it in the black and not have the citizens pick up its bill every month. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. We are looking into that, Mr. Griffin, as the negotiations, I, I believe that we will get fair market value. All right, anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, sir?
Good evening, counsel. Jim Suny Cab, Collier Creek in Sebastian. I want to comment on the blue light in Easy Street. It's really been received awesome on the Easy Street Park on the Facebook. It's been advertised all over the world. We, we've getting people from other countries looking at the light through that Easy Street Park on Facebook. It's, it's a light that represents the autism, and represents the, the police that serve, and police that have fallen, and also abused children. One of the things everybody asks is, is the light going to be changed? A, April is the, the month of autism, the blues represented in. And my understanding from Joe, that we're going to change the color to something else after that. What it is, haven't decided yet, but it, the light's really selling Sebastian all over the world. It's really working. Also, I'd like to comment on the, the water in Collier Creek. I live in Collier Creek. This has been, it's an HOA. It has been voted on twice through the HOA, and turned down twice at the HOA. And there's, the proposal is to just put the water on a couple of streets. This water situation has divided people. There's people that's moved out of Collier Creek because of the water situ, I mean, it's just, this water situation has really messed up Collier Creek. I feel like, you know, these are high-end homes, it's, it's a hundred and eighty-something subdivision, the, the water should have been put in when, when the place was built, been a lot cheaper, and it's, and I, I feel like, you know, as, as an HOA, it's voted on, but yet, I have to eat the fact that a group of them wants it in. It doesn't seem fair that I have to go along with a small group, and the whole group has voted no. And I just want you in the public to know that it was voted down twice, and the, the ones that's going to benefit from this is the people that's on the committee of the And I feel like I, not everybody on, on, on Easy Street wants the water. And I, I feel like the, the city then, when the place was built, should have stepped in maybe, and Collier Creek should have had water then. And maybe somebody can do something for us now, rather than forcing all the expense on the homeowner. That's it for tonight. Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Wish it was an easy thing, when they assessed me, I was like, it was, it drove me up insane. But you know what, I'm glad I did convert to the county water, because ultimately winds up being cheaper, and it's cleaner water. and it's cleaner water and my kids get better water. And the clothes don't get brown.
I'm for it either way.
Right.
But I don't like it being the way it's being, no choice.
Right.
You know, it's, I feel like it should be either everybody or nobody.
Everybody or nobody.
Well, either way, not just have.
I guess the thing you could look at, they could run the line, you get assessed and whether you want to hook up and pay the additional money, you can do that or continue to work on your well water.
That's my understanding.
Yes.
It's just like septic.
Right.
That you're going to get assessed for the initial line that goes by your home or that's passing close to your property. And then it costs an additional amount to hook up to the septic. It's the same thing with water. In 2004, in Orange Heights, they came in and they did that whole route the same way. Everybody was assessed and some people hooked up and some people didn't. That's your option.
That's true. But everybody's not going to get the line in front of their house.
No, that will, everyone in the development be able to hook up?
Well, they'll have a meeting at the yacht club. I can't remember what the date was.
Informational meeting on March the 7th.
There'll be a meeting at the yacht club where they can deal with the county at that.
Okay.
Right. Just keep posted, they may move it over here because there might be a lot more concerns to citizens than the yacht club can hold. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? All right, that leads us up to new business item 14A. Consider fiscal year 1718 budget objectives. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. This agenda transmittal on page 62 of 73 and also the next one on 66 of 73 can be combined, I think, for discussion if you like because they arose out of the same motion that Mr. Dodd made at the last meeting seconded by Mr. Hill. So, we have split these up to look at, to finalize objectives for the 1718 budget and then the next one to look at CIP issues.
All right, Mr. Dodd, you want to?
Okay, yeah. Just to brush up, the overall intent was to see if the council was amenable to producing, I don't know, a statement of goals. I don't want to call them guidelines because I think it's basically goals to the, primarily to the budget committee and to the city staff as they enter into the budget cycle this year as opposed to waiting until the end of the cycle. I did submit, it's on page 65 of the handout, I submitted some fundamental items to the city manager and he put them in the document. And it does combine the two together. It's not a separate thing. The first one was ad valorem tax revenue would be budgeted at the same income level used in 2016-17 budget. I stated it that way primarily because the city attorney had some objections to talking about millage. But the objective is to basically tell the budget committee that we're interested in seeing a budget that contains ad valorem taxes at our current level, not at an increased level. Okay? The remaining reserve fund payment for the early retirement would be paid in a, at 20% per year over the next five budget cycles, once again, as a goal. The reason for that is that in the 1617 budget, there are some staffing issues and in my conversations with the city manager, he feels he doesn't have the budget to do some of these things. And what I would like to see us do in the 1718 budget is to free up as much budget money as possible to assist with that. That kind of goes along with item number three, which has got three sub-points and that is to make sure that the budget committee can identify staffing numbers and include those that support the overall mission statement, which is development of a growth management plan, assist the city recreational and cultural activities and to assist in getting grants. I think a growth management director can facilitate all of those. And there needs to be some budget relief provided the city manager to be able to hire somebody qualified to do that. He really doesn't have the money in the current budget to do that. And I would like to see the budget process try to free that cash up. I know that's difficult. You're talking about not raising taxes, but ad valorem taxes are not the entire pot of money that we receive. There's other pieces, other sources of revenue that we receive. As far as the capital improvement plan, basically from my perspective, the capital improvement plan priorities should be aimed towards stormwater, road maintenance and sidewalk repair and construction. I think if there are other capital improvement items, they would be a secondary priority to those three types of items. And if the funding's not available to do them, then we should get some feedback, rather than feedback that says raise taxes, we should get some feedback that says these particular items are something that we're requesting and here's how we want to pay for them. If, I mean, I'm not amenable, I mean, excuse me, I'm not opposed to raising taxes. I think I said this before many times. I'm not opposed to raising taxes, I'm opposed to spending. And if we raise taxes for a specific reason, that's a good reason, I think that's something we can argue with the people in the city. But if we raise taxes just because we're raising taxes, that's difficult to argue with the people in the city. So, that's just my input. I think it's important that we provide some direction up front rather than come back at the end of the process and get kind of upset because we're not getting what we wanted to get out of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would agree 100%. I'm glad we're having this discussion early on and I just want to be clear first that we're handling both A and B in this discussion.
That we're what?
We're taking care of items 14A and B in this discussion.
Yeah.
Just to make sure we're not going to have the same discussion again.
Oh, no. As far as I'm concerned, we are about the mayor.
That's why I'm asking the mayor.
Yeah. Are we going to combine 14A and B?
Let's try and do that. Hopefully, we can.
Let's do that. I've got two, I'm good with that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've got two brief statements that I'll make and I agree with Mr. Dodd and I appreciate that we're having this discussion. And as far as, as far as spending goes, this will be the exact same statement I make every single year, is that we spend not one penny more than we absolutely have to to maintain the quality of life that we expect and demand. And that's that. Whether that's a rollback or whether that's a tax cut, whatever it may be, I'm always in favor of tax cuts. You know, so we spend less than, not one penny more than we have to in order to maintain the quality of life. That's it for me on that. And then I agree with you on your capital improvements and I think that's pretty much the direction the city's been going over the last several years with working on the Tulip project and some of the other issues and then the stormwater issues that we've had along the riverfront and the Collier Canal projects and all of these different things and the twin ditches. And we've been working on drainage and roads for many years and I think we need to continue to focus on that. Sidewalk repair, of course, I think is a part of that. That's just an infrastructure maintenance issue. One of the things that I think that we need to also make sure that we take care of is the parking lot that we just installed on 512. That parking lot's going to need lighting, it's going to need landscaping. That parking lot, I don't believe is done to the standards of the community. I believe I'm glad, I'm very happy that we have a parking lot there. And in discussions with the city manager, I know he has plans and I want to make sure that we go forward with those plans and don't just assume the parking lot is complete. It still has, we have certain standards that we need to bring that up to. So, I agree. I appreciate you bringing this forward, Mr. Dodd, and that's all I have to say on the budget and the capital improvement plan.
All right, anyone else?
Oh, yes. Well, Mr. Hill, you'll be glad to hear that I love your statement and I will totally, totally support not one penny more than we have to to maintain our quality of life. I can support that 100% because that allows for fluctuations. It allows for a hurricane. It allows for, gee, it allows for growth. It allows for the hard decisions. So, I agree. And I think this council is fully capable, even more so capable now with the watchful eyes up here, to argue with the budget committee any items that are not necessary as we have in the past. We win some, we lose some, but I think this collegial body can argue what is and what is not one penny more than we have to. Now, to say that we're not going to budget any more ad valorem tax revenue, which is kind of an obscure way of doing something we're not allowed to do, which is set the millage rate prior to the hearings. By doing that, I guess we're not in, we're anticipating zero growth. And I don't think any one of us up here will say there's not going to be any growth. If you do, then you're saying that the growth will pay for itself, which residential growth, we know, does not pay for itself. It does not take into account that we have contractual obligations of pay raises for all of our staff. The contractual obligations are 3% increases. No?
We have labor negotiation openers this year just for wages, for both contracts. But there is no automatic year-over-year 3%. That comes out of the budget process and things like.
It's open this year? Okay. I take that back. I take that back. You think they're going to ask for nothing? Yes and not. There's going to be negotiations on that. We have not, last year was the first time we were generous to our employees as far, not for contractual negotiations, but as far as giving back the benefits that we took away. So, we're still behind. So, we owe, we owe there. There's going to be growth. I think we're able to look independently at each item. We can do it, item by item, if you want. I'll stay here all night long to do it, if that's how you want to do it. And I mean that. And we can argue the merits.
With all due respect, and I'll be very brief, I don't think there's a single person up here that said they will not raise taxes if it's necessary. But I do think that the goal of providing the service and the level of service that the people want in this community, while doing that as efficiently as possible, is the goal that we should always have. So, I think that's basically all that was stated by anyone up here.
Okay. But what, I'm looking at a statement that said will be budgeted. If it's not possible, then will be is kind of strong assertion in there. That's a mandate. I like your wording much, much better and can live with that as direction and a warning to the Budget Review Committee that this body will look very careful at all the program, all the vehicles. And, you know, Lyndon knows, she's got the background. She's, she knows a lot of the numbers. And so, I'm prepared to sit down and go over that, line by line. I know we need more stuff in the parking lot. So, to say that, to restrict it right out, right, that's a political statement. That's not a, that's not a realistic statement. To limit folks, you have to look at what we need. So, I think we just need to use your terms. I really like that statement. And give them fair warning that we are going to, item by item, go down through everything and establish the need. If we find no need, and that goes for the directors too.
When's the last time that the budget committee came back to the council with a proposal to not increase the millage to at least the, at least above the rollback, right?
Wasn't that long ago.
Hadn't happened on my watch. So, I can't say.
Okay. And then.
Oh, wait a minute.
And I would suggest that last year was a clear example of why we need to have this discussion now. Because last year, there was numbers just picked out of the sky and thrown on the table. So, I mean, there's, this council has, in the past, not made its decisions based on what we need to spend.
Yes.
So, that's clearly, last year was a case of that. So, I think the discussion needs to take place.
We can disagree on that, but this year is different. This is a new council. We have two new members of council who have their opinions and some very strong ones about what we need and what we don't need. And I think that's good. And I'm prepared to look at each item, but to say right from the get-go, this is what we're doing, one, I think it's dangerously, you know, when you start talking ad valorem taxes, yeah, you're skirting that issue, but we're not allowed to set the millage rate other than at a public hearing. So, I think we need to avoid that. And I would prefer that.
I think when you're establishing goals, I'm still kind of confused, Mr. Ginsburg, about when you're establishing a goal and you say your goal is to budget to rollback. You don't know what rollback is. I mean, you, all you know at that point in time is that rollback is what you, what you collected last year plus any revenue from new construction, so forth, so forth, so forth. That's all you know about it. You're not establishing the rollback as a millage rate when you say that I have a goal as in the budget process to budget to that, to that rollback level.
Well, the way you have it here, I don't have an objection with.
Okay.
The problem, I believe, last time, I was reacting to what I felt was a more specific discussion of millage and rollback. Rollback is an automatic number.
Yes.
It comes up as a certain, we don't, we may not know it today, but we'll know it at the time. And to start dealing with specific numbers in millage is, that to me was problematic.
Yes.
That's all. I don't intend to, I'm not going to stand in the way of any kind of goal, budget goals or priorities or anything like that.
Okay.
I would say our goal is always to stay within our means. You know, I think each and every year, we look at that. And, you know, I was on council two years ago when we were going to pay back the city early retirement the same year, but I was here and they said we pay it back in two years. Now, this plan is saying, put it off a few more additional years, you know, and I like the pay-as-you-go kind of deal. And then I also look at the thing is, we're setting these priorities, are we taking any of the city manager's ability to navigate through, through all these projects? And again, one of the big ones that always keeps me up at night is the health plan, the cost of the health insurance for our employees. I keep waiting for that to kind of go off the rails. But I agree with Ms. Coy. I'm ready to go item by item and say, we go, we don't go. I mean, but just to, I think the number one goal is stay within our means.
Things like salary increases and insurance premiums are not capital improvement items, they're operational items. And I agree 100%. You can't, and you have to deal with that stuff from, during the budget process, you have to deal with that stuff. But if you don't establish goals, okay, so, let's think about this. If we, if we want to pay back the $190,000 to the, instead of doing it over five years, we could do it tomorrow. And the reason we could do it tomorrow, we've got an R and R fund, it's got $427,000 in it. I just, at the last budget review meeting that I watched, I learned something I didn't know. At the end of the budget cycle last year, they put a $240,000 operational surplus into the R and R fund. At the same time, we raised taxes to pay back a loan without using that $240,000.
Yes, they did.
So, we raised taxes while we put money into a fund that was an operational profit from the year before. So, to me, that makes it even more important that we provide some goal-setting. I mean, that should have been a discussion that was had in front of this council. And I watched every one of those meetings last year and I don't remember anybody telling the council, we have an option to this. We have an alternative. We have something we can do other than raise the millage. You know, and so, what I'm saying is that we have, we have to, I think, establish a set of goals that puts everybody on notice that says we're going to do that. I certainly agree, we should do a line-by-line operational review of the entire thing.
Well, and the bottom line is, I think one of the most important things about what you have in your list is, we don't have to make that last six years, five years to the repayment, but what we, what we should do is we should never allow that to cause us to increase taxes.
Right.
And I think that that's reasonable because once you increase taxes, every single year, rollback is based upon your rate of the previous year.
And, yeah, and there was a very good statement made by one of the members in the budget committee about they don't like the concept of borrowing money from the reserves to do things that, like this loan for the, you know, their preference is, let's just, let's pay it back. Let's don't have the reserves be depleted for operational things. I think it was a very good statement that was made, but it was, it was done. The money was borrowed from the reserve account. And I'm not 100% tied myself to this 20%, per year. However, I do know in my conversation with the city manager is that there are some staffing issues that I think that we need to talk about. We're going to talk in a few minutes about something that's potentially impacting on that. But there are some staffing issues that he needs budget relief on. And we should be concentrating on that budget relief to provide those staffing issues or concentrating on trying to do something to do that. or concentrating on trying to do something to do that. We're not operational. I'm not trying to build a budget. That's his problem. But we're fiduciary. I mean, if you think of us as the board of directors and him as the CEO, our job is fiduciary. We're protecting the stockholders, which are the citizens, and we're supposed to make sure that there aren't things being done with their money that aren't conducive to their benefit. And so, what I'm saying is that by establishing a set of goals, it's just... this is just my way of recommending that we do something to tell those people how we think the benefit should be protected.
I'd like to make a motion that we advise the Budget Review Committee that not one penny more than we have to, to maintain our quality of life, will be budgeted in the next budget. Period.
Second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd.
No.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So, that concluded 14 A and B. Or anybody we didn't think we'd uncovered? All right, leads us up to item 14C, Consider Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. The Tyndale Oliver has submitted a professional services agreement for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The cost is $50,000. A copy of the plan is in your packet, and we are recommending that you consider this.
I move to approve.
Second. All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this Recreation Master Plan proposal? Council discussion?
Yes.
It's not something we can do in-house.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
I mean, why are we not... why don't we use this $50,000 to hire somebody? Or why don't we do a mentoring program with Indian River State College and bring in three students and ask them to produce it, or something? It's not a priority. I mean, first of all, if we don't have this for six months, it's not... the world's not gonna fall apart. And so, it seems to me it's part and parcel with a lot of the other planning things that we need to do. And it's $50,000, potentially, towards acquiring a resource to do those things.
I brought this forward because it was a recommendation from the Parks and Rec Committee. I don't necessarily agree with it. I'm kind of in your camp, but they were adamant that I should bring this forward to council.
Okay. Because I don't have any problem with the plan, at all. I just... my issue is, is we have a lot of other plans that we can do, and the $50,000, assuming that it's legal for us to use the Parks and Rec funds to pay a staff member to do work for them, which I think it is, is not?
No, I don't think it is.
No, we can't do that.
No.
Can't do that? Okay. Well, even at that, the $50,000, I mean, that $50,000 would go a long way towards helping build a handicap park, or something that's gonna be done. But it seems like that the money would be better spent for us to try to acquire a resource to do this in-house, do this type of stuff in-house.
I mean, on the same token, I see it as a plan that's gonna sit on the shelf and collect dust. We had one for looking at community centers. I think we spent $75,000 on. And I see in this one, they're looking for $10,000 for community outreach. And I remember the one for the community center, that it was me, Ms. Coy, and four other people that were in here.
Exactly.
You know? And that's a plan that is just sitting on a shelf.
I'll never forget that night, that we sat here for community... and oh, by the way...
And you went out when I talked, and I went out when you talked.
That's exactly right. We had the tag team. But... and if you look at, on page 72 of 73, "Community Outreach Number Four," the very bottom of number four, "The planning team will provide the city with an invitation flyer to be used in promoting the events. The City of Sebastian has to go out and scarf up its own people," which we didn't do real well the last time. We got four of us to show up. The City of Sebastian is on the hook for coming up with the people, for the input. We... if we have to do it, why don't we do it for ourselves? Mr. Dodd, I agree 100 percent with you. $50,000, here's a line item, I'll scratch right away. Let's get rid of that. I've been saying all along, we can do it in-house.
I would just ask the city manager, could you do this in-house with the current staff?
Yeah.
Negative.
What staff's gonna do it?
Negative. So, if we hire someone, it's gonna cost a hell of a lot more than $50,000. So, you know, we need to be careful when we're starting to talk about putting more planning staff on. So, we don't have the staff currently within the city to handle projects like this. So, if you don't want the project, then nix the project. But if you want the project, then we need to have it done professionally, because if we start hiring staff, those staff, the numbers go way up, way above $50,000. When you're starting to hire a professional planner, that's gonna be more than $50,000 a year, guaranteed. And you're talking about the planner, the benefits, and all of those things, that over years, just continue to exponentially grow. Now, we maybe eight or nine years ago could've handled this, when we had the tremendous staff that we had in place prior to 2007... I'm sorry, 10 years ago, we could've probably possibly handled this, because our staffing was much bigger. We do not currently have the staff in place to handle this. So, if we're talking about putting more staff on, then we're talking about spending more money.
Maybe it's not necessary to have a piece of paper that sits on the shelf.
Then nix the project.
Exactly. Exactly. Why can't we do it part by part, like we're doing now? I don't know that... I have not received any bad vibes from the public, that we're doing a bad job in our parks. We have some of the finest parks, enviable. So, I'm... are we doing a bad job? I'm not getting that feedback. And if you have a project... by the way, look at all the projects that have come up. Let's say we... let's assume we do a plan, and they come up with these ideas, "Oh, in Schuman, we're gonna put in yada, yada, yada." And then you come down to having that little discussion here, all the people come out and go, "We don't want yada, yada, yada in our backyard." And we wind up nixing all of these projects. We spent $50,000? Gone.
Don't disagree. I don't... I do not disagree with you all at all. What I'm saying is, this council has discussed going forward with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The Parks Committee has discussed it and directed the city manager to bring it before us. Now, if we don't wanna do it, that's a different story. But if we're gonna do it, then we need to do it right by the professionals who do these things. So, we can just say no, and I'd be all right with that. But if we're gonna do a plan, then I believe that because of the situation we have currently with the staffing, that we need to go forward and hire the professionals to do that.
I'm with him.
All right. Any further discussion on this? We had a motion in a second for the plan. Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The representative from Tyndale Oliver is here, in case you wanna talk to her.
You wanna hear from her? No? All right. Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Vice Mayor Coy.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we have not had public input on this.
Yes, I requested public input. Nobody came after the motion in a second.
Right there, raising his hand.
Right. Well, I asked for public input, and then we went to council discussion.
Very good.
Is that correct, Ms. Williams?
Is the motion to approve...
The motion was to approve the plan. It was made by Mr. Hill, seconded in by Ms. Kitchen.
I didn't hear the call for public input, so apparently there was. My apologies.
So, you're ready for roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor Coy.
The motion is to approve the plan.
The plan?
No.
Mr. Dodd.
No.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen.
Yes.
And Mayor McPartlin.
No.
Okay, it fails.
All right. That leads us up to City Attorney Matters. Mr. Ginsburg.
I have nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. Just one thing. Last meeting, I made a presentation to council regarding our piers and docks, and I brought forward a proposal of mine to reduce the size of some of our piers and docks when we go for our repair or reconstruction with FEMA assistance. Subsequent to that, we had yet another meeting with FEMA representatives out at the piers and docks, and I wanna withdraw that presentation that I made last week, or last meeting, I should say. I'm of the opinion now that the piers and the docks should all be repaired back to their normal length and their normal structure, except for the Bordeaux Pier, which is just north of the Main Street Pier. I've had a preliminary estimate to demolish that pier, and it is within my spending authority to do so. I will get a couple more bids on that. But I am recommending that we go forward and reconstruct the piers and docks back to their original length and original structure, with the exception of the Bordeaux Dock. If you like, next meeting, I will bring forward a proposal on the Bordeaux Dock to have that demoed. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Williams. You have nothing? Okay. All right. All I have is, I guess in... April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and last year, here in the City of Sebastian, we had the Castle's Memorial Flags, for a flag representing each of the children who died from abuse or neglect from the previous year. And Castle had approached me about doing it again in Sebastian between the dates of April 19th through April 28th. Is there any council problem with us having the flags again in Riverview Park?
That was awesome.
Okay.
That was awesome.
Okay. And then I'll work with Joe, and then again, we'll look at doing a presentation like we did last year, an opening ceremony for the flags. That's all I have. Ms. Coy.
Just one... two items, actually. One is, at the next meeting, we need to discuss that Lagoon Council, what we're doing with it. Can we get that on the agenda, please? I kinda was hoping we could dispose of that, one way or the other, whatever this council decides to do. We owe them a response to deal with... to finalize the issue, to get it totally off our plate. It's not off our plate.
The question is, is that because there's no sunset provision in that? Because it states in there that, once that's done, then they... I mean, that's their existence, is simply to get on the board, and then once the county gets on the board, they'll get off, and there's no longer a need for it. But there's no sunset violation in it, so there's... we have to go through this process. Is that...
Put it in there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. That'd be fun. Just so that... we've gotta do something. We have to act. So, okay. And the other item is, a lot of demands are put on our city manager. He gets the calls, and we all have our little cards now, that he has to respond to the citizen hotline, the request line. And he gets... he probably can't go to Walmart like us. You know, you get accosted everywhere you go. And I certainly wouldn't want that job. I sometimes wonder why I've ever wanted this job, so many times. But I want council... and this runs along our lines of, we're gonna watch everything that comes before. You know, we don't need to micromanage. But I think some of the demands and some of the decisions, I would like to kinda tighten up on... I don't wanna make your job more difficult, at all. And I don't want to infringe on your ability to make decisions. But we have people who request things, you know, one-at-a-time type thing. You might hear one person over here ask for something, and then maybe one other person, and then all of a sudden, you have a change to a neighborhood, or a community, that seems like a little innocuous thing, but without having a huge support behind it. When one or two people... and I see the confused look, I'll be real specific about it. We discussed the blue light here. No decision was made by this council. And the blue light went in. Now, I heard two people... two people bring forward that issue. That's not a majority of folks. That's like asking to paint the lines, the center line, pink, in honor of yada, yada, yada. It may seem like a good idea, but without going through a process, I just would like us to be a little more careful about stuff like that. I don't think it's fair that we make decisions... any of us make decisions, based on just a couple people. I think we need to be really clear where our support is coming from, where his support is coming from, and I think we need to take some of the burden off. He gets hit up, left, right, left, right. You don't always have to say yes. It is okay to say no. I know you wanna say yes all the time. I do, too. But sometimes, it's okay to say no. I guess that's a good way to end it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Dodd.
I have to admit, I'm confused. And I have to say something, not because I... well, I just have to. I'm not sure who the "they" are that are creating problems for you, but if somebody's creating problems for you, they probably shouldn't do that. I'm not sure who the "they" are that are making decisions, that are doing that. I don't know where the blue light came from. I think when Jim Sonnykamp made a comment about a meeting ago, you had a very funny look on your face. I kinda thought you didn't know where it came from, either, the way you looked. So, I don't... I guess I'm confused as to what the issue... you know, what's being done that is creating that.
That seems like just a maintenance thing, that would just be a matter of them handling. I don't see how that is really an issue that should be anything...
And I'm trying to understand what you're saying, and I don't understand it. I'm kinda confused as to what they're...
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
The people who live in that neighborhood... I'm one of them. I don't think we're consulted on the issue. A couple of people brought this to the city manager's attention. I think one lady on the Parks Committee was interested in doing that, but it wasn't voted on at Parks, it wasn't approved up here, and the decision was made. That's the issue. Like you said, you don't know where it came from.
Yeah.
I don't know where it came from. I mean, I know those two folks, but there was no ground swell. And I'm gonna tell you personally, not everybody likes it.
Well, I would say this, that we better be careful if we're gonna start talking about the color of lights, because there are trees that are put out at the golf course all the time, and the city manager doesn't come up and ask if it's okay to put a tree on the 10th hole at the dog leg. And some people might not like it, because they sliced the ball over behind that tree. But that's a command decision. That's virtually not even in his purview to even discuss. That's all the way down. And I would suggest that even the color of lights... and if you've got concerns with the blue light, I don't really... it's fine with me, a blue light, a red light, a pink light, do what you want with the lights. If you want it to be white all the time, then let's have a discussion, city council.
Well, the resolution... the resolution he made was perfect, is that it'll be blue for April.
Right. And that's fine. So, it seems to me like he's got it pretty well handled. And those issues, to me, you know, those are just management issues that we need to stay way, 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 way away from, because we don't want him to be concerned...
Didn't ask him to change it.
That this council's gonna come down on him, because he painted a post at one park blue, and I like yellow better than blue, so I might be disappointed in the fact that
that maybe he decides, or Parks and Rec, or someone decides to put trail markers that say .5 miles every .5 miles or something like that. And we can't get involved in that type of minutia. We, that's way, way, way his deal, and I would...
Just reinforcing to him that it's okay to say no.
Oh, that's, I understand that, too. I don't, I just want to make sure...
That's all, and I liked his resolution to the issue.
Right.
And that's, we had someone come up and say, "I don't understand why it's only until April." Well, that's why. Our city manager came to a good, let me highlight that, came to a very good resolution.
It is with great pleasure that I give his phone number to many people to resolve the situation. That is not my responsibility. So, I have no problem saying, "This is the guy you called, and here's his number."
Okay. I'm watching his face. I'm not sure he really understood. But we have much more important things to deal with than that, I think. So, but I don't have anything else. Thank you.
All right. Well, St. Patrick's Day is coming, so make Main Street the lines green, okay?
No, let's, I want beer coming out of that fountain. I want beer coming out of that green light fountain. Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Kitchin?
Nothing.
All right. Being there, no further business. We're in adjournment.